Definitely a nurture situation.
Any dog can be a game dog.
Well, I'll tell you, I have yet to meet a collection too well.
Very few of those are very pleasant and they will nip and bite at you without obligation.
Yep.
We're good. Chris is back, everybody's back. All right. You ready? All right, we're gonna call this meeting in order at six thirty-four. Uh, let us. I would like to introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got everybody here, Pastor Pyro is zooming tonight. I'm hoping Pastor Wildcover will be here and Jim, Pastor McFly, will not be here, so. Let's start with the parents of interested citizens, I have Judy Gerard, son of David. Thank you, and if you could please state your name and address for the record.
I've got ten copies of this, yeah. My name is Judy Gerard, 305 Main Street here in Dayton. I'm a member of the Board for the Dayton Community Development Association. I want to thank you for your partnership through the years and your ongoing collaboration as we move forward. Through the years, some of you know that we've had different counselors on our board at different times, and that's been on the board, Drew's been on the board, Chris is on the board, I point over here because he's somewhere. The Chair of your Budget Committee has been on the board, Dan Holbrook's been on the board, so we've, we've had some great collaboration through the years and currently our, our Dayton, our DCDA, or President Yukaiya Bun, is connecting with they behind the scenes on our similar mutual goals. And I acknowledge the challenges inherent with the budget decisions that have to be made with limited resources. So I'm not disputing the decision that we've made to take twenty-five hundred dollars that's been annually paid to the DC, we're not disputing the, taking that out of the budget. But I do want to clarify a piece of information that was used at the point of that decision being made. How do I know this? Because Drew is responsible for me binge-watching the budget meetings, so I because I do always so far. And so I saw this and I thought, well, that's, that's not accurate. So I, and I feel it's important because it was a public setting and a public meeting, I feel it's important to correct the public record. During the meeting, it was said that the twenty-five hundred dollars that DCD received on an annual basis was for a newsletter that we no longer publish, and that's inaccurate. The twenty-five hundred dollars has always been for basic operating expenses, being the National Main Street fee, nonprofit insurance, post office box, things of that nature. But back in two thousand nine, the city and citizens got together and invited the Oregon Main Street Program to town to talk about what they were, who they were, how they did, what they did, and was it a fit for Dayton? And it didn't make sense for Dayton to do what Oregon Main Street's about, which is has to do with revitalizing downtowns and doing that with some heritage resources, well, with the things that Dave is doing right now. Out of that, the DCDA was born, and out of that process, the city offered to pay those basic operating expenses at that time. Since then, we have worked together revitalizing our downtown space, and we've also worked together on learning more about Oregon Main Street, what it means. We've had city managers and staff with us to Oregon Main Street conferences and some of the regional meetings, learning what's happening in other communities. What of that is happening over there can we bring here and do in this town? What are the best practices for Oregon Main Street right now? What can we do here? And through the years, we've had some pretty good things that we've done. If you look at the list of accomplishments that I passed out, that represents much of what we've been able to, to do. Not the least of which is Dayton Friday Nights, which starts June twenty-seventh, and I invite you all to come. But also the Dayton Forward Planning and the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant for the Merchant Block, which came through the DCDA. The city asked the DCDA to go through the effort of applying for that. So I recognize that the outcome with that twenty-five hundred dollars isn't going to change, and again, for me, it was important to correct the record around what that's been used for. And I just want to acknowledge that some of the key players currently are new. Dave and Jeremy in particular, who ones we typically would be working with. And they don't have full context of the history of working together since two thousand and nine. And unfortunately, I seem to be the last one standing who does have all of that historic context, since I've been with it since the start. So because of that, I will continue to offer myself as a resource to the city, to see council, as we continue to work for, move forward together and work together, because I, I see that continuing to happen. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks and say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you. All right. Um, it looks like the next few folks, Nick and Dan, you guys are here for Recology.
Yes, yes.
All right, do you guys mind if we rearrange the schedule just a little and we do them and then except slip to the other? Oh, definitely, let's do that hesitation.
Very much appreciate it. That was loud. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Dan Blue, I'm the Government Relations Manager for Recology at Northern Oregon, and with me, uh, good evening, Nick Olheiser, I'm the new Assistant General Manager for our Recology Northern Oregon operations with the focus on our Western Oregon operations here in McMinnville. Um, also have oversight of our coast operations out of Warrington. Um, been with the company for seventeen, wow, seventeen years now. Um, so new to the role, but definitely not new to the company by any means. Uh, very local to the area, born and raised in Dayton, graduated from Dayton High as well, yes, so me and my family still live right outside of town here. Um, and over by Hanover Road there, so very, um, yeah, very deep, uh, local roots, so thank you for having us here, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, let me get to my, I wasn't expecting to be up quite as quickly, I need to get to my first slide, I know you can see it, uh, there we go. So, uh, tonight, I'm just gonna cover a very high-level reminder overview of a little bit of our Recology. Uh, talk about some of the things we do in the community, Nick's gonna help with that and operations, um, and then jump into the rate review process. Uh, and then should be really short, so I'll just jump into it, thank you. Um, so just the next slide, please. A little bit about Recology, um, so we're a West Coast-only garbage collection company, we have just, um, over or just under four thousand employee owners. Uh, we serve a hundred and thirty-seven communities through twenty-six different collection companies. We also operate twenty-four transfer stations, fourteen recycling material recovery facilities, the place where recyclables get sorted out, uh, and also eight composting facilities. Nick's gonna talk a little bit more about our operations in the next slide. I do want to emphasize that we are not a landfill, uh, company. We, some of the bigger companies own landfills, and that's really a giant profit center for them, we really focus on safe, efficient, and materials management and focus on resource recovery, that's sort of our MO. We also, last but not least, one hundred, are one hundred percent employee-owned, so no one person can own more than one percent of the company, so that helps keep, um, in Nick's case, uh, you know, retirement and, uh, benefits here local and in the communities that we serve. I'll turn it over to Nick for the next slide.
Perfect, thanks, Dan. Um, so I'm sure some of you are pretty familiar with our operations that we have in McMinnville, just want to do a quick highlight of our Valley operations that we have. Uh, so first, we have our collection company, which is located over off of Lafayette Avenue. Um, it's there that we house our trucks, we have our shopyard there as well, we also have our offices, um, that have our administrative staff as well as our local CSR team, uh, spaced out of that office. And then adjacent to the compost, or I'm sorry, adjacent to the collection company over off of Orchard Avenue, we have our transfer station. Um, it's there that we have our fairly robust, um, public depot drop-off there, where residents throughout the whole county can come bring in glass, cardboard, plastic, whatever they might have to drop that off. Yeah, exactly, it's very robust, actually is. Um, and then next to that, we also have our compost facility there as well, so you can bring in and come drop off your yard debris, Dan's part of the sticker programs, we sell you a lot of Dayton residents that show up there as well, that can pick up art dust as well, whether they're taking back to their, to their residence or business, or whatever they might be, so. Uh, within our Valley operation, we have eighty employees total, that includes our drivers, operators, uh, administrative staff, uh, mechanics, uh, as well as our CSR staff that I mentioned there as well, of the eighty, thirty of which are, um, drivers that service the community in and out of towns every day, every week, um, including Dayton, picking up trash, recycling, uh, yard debris, adding glass as well, here in Dayton, so quick overview of our operations for you guys.
Thanks, Nick, next slide, please. Uh, so just a little bit more, we, um, try to support the communities that we serve, here's just a, a list of some of the things we do. Yarmouth County Fair, we support, we've done some birthday activities. Uh, we often are working, picking up garbage at the airshow, uh, annual cleanups like the one we recently did here in Dayton. Um, we did a really fun new thing this year, we did a poster contest for schools throughout our service area here, with, um, over seventy-nine, uh, students or classrooms submitting posters for our contest, and we chose one to win, and we put their poster on a T-shirt and we handed it out during Earth Day, which is super cool, great way to help educate kids about recycling. Uh, we support universities, colleges, um, also do local sponsorships, I believe in Dayton, we've supported the Community Garden with compost. Um, and I believe we're gonna be in the parade, uh, coming up here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Um, we also have a waste reduction team, we started a new artist and residency program here, where we've just selected two local artists. We're gonna provide a stipend for four months, they will have access to the transfer station to be able to pull landfill-bound materials out and create art. And then we will have a showcase event in October in downtown McMinnville. This is not paid for by your rates, this comes out of our, you know, margin at the top. Um, but we do this in Seattle, Portland, started in the Bay Area, and we've been doing it at the coast for years, and now that we have Cade, our new waste zero specialist, zero waste specialist, we've, we've launched that program, so we picked two local artists just this week, so very excited to have that. Uh, I do want to point out, you know, one of the issues and challenges we've had over the last few years has been our hold times on our customer service lines. We have, um, done a lot of work and reduced our whole wait times by seventy-one percent since last year. So, um, and our CSAT score is four point seven six with, out of a possible five, four point seven six is great, but we're gonna strive to do better, so. That was a lot of work, congratulations to the team. Okay, now I'm gonna jump in next slide, please, to the less fun stuff. Um, okay, so we have the privilege of being your franchise hauler, which gives us exclusivity to collect material in your city. In return, we pay fees to the city, and we operate within a margin that is established by the franchise agreement, so we not allowed to make less and we're not allowed to make more, it's part of this arrangement. This year, I'm gonna jump right to it, we're requesting a two-point-one percent rate increase across all lines of service. This is really a CPI or cost of living adjustment, and in fact, two-point-one is exactly April-to-April CPI for, for last year. Let's see, so this would have a fifty cent impact on the thirty-two gallon curbside customer and an eighty-four cent impact on your most popular customer who's in the ninety-gallon roll cart. Uh, just a little bit of more background about the way the franchise is set up, there's basically two ways that you can seek a rate adjustment, one is CPI, which is kind of like a pass-through, I, I don't know if you're needing to vote on it tonight or not, but that's, as long as it's under four percent, we can kind of come to you and say, we need this adjustment, it also does really help with avoiding a larger rate increase in subsequent years, so.
Don't, we know.
And you are not alone, almost everywhere it's two-point-one, like, we've been able to hold the line there to this, to CPI. The second way a rate adjustment can be made is if it's going, if it, if we fall outside of the operating range, which is on the slide, uh, eighty-five to ninety-one percent, uh, we do a full rate review process. It doesn't really look that much different from you be, for, for the, from this year, because we provided you with our annual report, we provided you with our third-party financial review. Um, but un- under that second mechanism, if we're outside of that range that's allowed by the franchise, then we have a conversation and it goes through a voting process and all of that, and hopefully we adjust rates to get us to back within the range. So this year, using the prior method, the, the CPI base, ask for your support on this, some of the drivers, um, Pop and Boot Landfill, they're, let's see, I lost my notes, they're, they're, um, they have eleven, right, eleven percent rate increase, so that's a big chunk of it, um, we've also taken possession of some new vehicles that have been ordered for two to three years, that finally arrived this year. Our average age of our fleet was sixteen years, which is too old for garden trucks, um, so that's actually a good thing, helps keep maintenance costs down, so we're really happy to have those new vehicles. And, uh, other than that, it's really just cost of living CPI. So, next slide, please. What that looks like for the most common ratepayers. This is our residential rates, again, eighty-four cents for the ninety-gallon roll cart customer, next slide. And I put in what, uh, what the impact would be for commercial customers, and I just selected one-point-five-yard front-load customer, and that would be four-seventy-seven. So, that's really it, you know, it's never fun to come and ask for, for a rate adjustment, but it's kind of a necessary step, happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm doing everything here with our kids.
Oh, forgot, I knew there was one other thing, we also support the ABC Foundation by attending that and, you know, participating, so, yes, we could do an Earth Day event.
We are trying to get, well, one of our community members is trying to get a Community Garden or a school-based.
And you guys donated.
Yeah, we have, yeah, sure thing, we can do that again.
But it would be really fun, you know, if we make a big deal of it and have you out, and.
I'm saying yes, and.
News.
Kate, Kate reports to me, so I'm saying yes. You can make that.
Okay, Savannah will be. Not me, that's Savannah, look at my little feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so that eighty-six percent that we'd be operating on if this was approved, what must, what effect date is that based off of?
That, um, the July one, so. And I didn't say this, but when we do the rate review each year, we take last year's actuals, and then we take this year's, um, actuals on both costs and revenues, and then we project out revenues for the coming, actually the current twelve-month cycle, and then we build in any other projections like, well, Coffin View rate, rate increases is a known thing, but, uh, labor, cost of fuel, there's a little bit of uncertainty with the economy right now, but you know, we're trying to be fair to everybody on this, and that's why we came up with the two-point-one tied to CPI.
So knowing that we need to stick within that eighty-five percent.
Yeah.
If we were to, let's say, postpone this by a month on our side of things, because we just, we just approved our rate increase, it'd be nice to maybe spread, spread that out a little bit. Uh, if a month delay, what does that look like within that eighty-five, you know, threshold that we have to be within? I'm just curious, do we have the ability of like, hey, can we give them thirty days, can we give them sixty days?
Yeah.
You know, I, I know that this may or may not be realistic, but I want to ask just to see if we can, you know, kind of spread that out a little bit, so if all these rate increases aren't hitting all of them once.
Yeah, no, I, I totally appreciate that, and I think July one is sort of the typical adjustment date, and it's usually tied to our billing cycle, and we have, I, I believe, a two-month billing cycle here. So the way we would roll this out, it, you know, would be effective July one, June rates would stay the same, July rates would change. If you push that out, it would be a relatively modest adjustment, but it, block cleaner, if we just keep it in line with the, the billing cycle, which is kind of what we're.
And, and not to be rude at all, but, you know, our, our priority is, is arguing, so I just want to make sure that we're being fair to them, and, you know, we had to make some more decisions, and I, I want to make sure that we're not, you know, compounding this too much. So I would just be really interested to see, you know, if that next billing cycle, if we did decide, you know, to, to push a vote out, I mean, I know that's within our power to make that decision or not, but, you know, just how that conversation would go, and then if that is a compromise, that Recology is like, hey, you know, this one time, because of the, the circumstances that we are within, that's acceptable, or hey, this is not acceptable, so just.
Yeah.
Just having that conversation is, is mildly asked there.
Yeah, and I, I, I certainly appreciate that, kind of would defer to the franchise and, and the wording of the franchise, which.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, so, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to read the applicable section of the franchise agreement, which is.
Um, sure.
Okay, so I'm reading from the section that relates specifically to the CPI-based adjustment. It states, "The franchisee shall submit to the city a notice of a change in the established rates based on the CPI adjustment described." Another section, "This document shall be submitted to the city manager as soon as possible after April thirtieth, but no later than June first. Then thirty days following the written notice of a rate change, the city manager shall make specific findings on the validity of the change in the CPI for a copy of findings, the franchisee's notice, a copy of the amended rates to the city council, and the franchisee. And these rates shall become effective on July.
Okay.
There's not a lot of legal one.
And I, I apologize, I, I work with twenty-one jurisdictions and I don't know every language of every franchise, but I, I thought that's what I had.
No worries, I just wanted to ask the question.
I, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, um, anybody else have any questions? All right, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. No, no, I mean, they were the original text. Yeah. So now we get to move on to, uh, homework bound tents. Page one through four.
We have Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer, would you like to go ahead and speak away?
Hello, thank you for having me. There's, um, the biggest news about this bay neuter clinic at homework bound is we're getting a bigger building. It was donated just a few months ago, and in time, it will actually accommodate two full-time vets. So we're getting moved over hopefully by the end of the summer, and we'll be able to spay and neuter more dogs, we'll have room for big dogs.
Yay.
We are hoping that, um, next year we'll be able to open Fridays and have bring on another vet to work Fridays. And if things go well, in a couple of years, we'll be doing two full-time vets every day.
Fantastic.
Um, what else can I tell you?
Have any questions? Is there an ask? They're all aware. So, if you have questions, or maybe you want to donate out of your personal pocket, that's always welcome. They do great things. But if we get more monies in the budget, we would love to help.
And I know my application was late this year, so next year, I'll, I'll get it in a little sooner.
No worries, no worries. We're very excited.
And, and we like the city of Dayton, we still see a lot of Dayton residents, and, uh, we're still getting in Dayton rabbits for free spays and neuters.
Why? Thank you. We have a pet rabbit because of that. How wonderful. That's awesome, would you like us to, um, or maybe you might be interested in coming out when we do our national night out?
Ooh. When is that?
Uh, that is August fifth.
I'll check into that, I think we came out for that once a few years ago.
Yeah, it's a really fun event, and, um, you'll run into a lot of Dayton residents, and we can spread the word more.
Sounds good.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much, Jennifer, you have a good evening.
You too.
All right, up next is Savannah. Yeah.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Hello, my name is Savannah Schmott, my address is eight-two-nine Joel Palmer Way here in Dayton. And some of you may know, I'm a community member and a parent, my kids, uh, one of them goes to Dayton Grade School, my other one will start there in the fall. And today, I was originally going to come to you guys and ask for a little bit of help or a little nudge toward this garden project, and as of right now, that plan has changed. I wanted to come to you guys and present to you what we have done, our sponsorships, our funding that we have recruited, and a little video, I do believe, that we have to share. And if you guys would like to view this first, and then I can go into the finer details after. Very short little video.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, I guess I can start out with, um, what are donations and sponsorships so far for the garden? Um, I've reached out, uh, stretched out to the community, a few different people, and have been graciously given information about people who would love to donate to this project. So that being said, um, first off, First Builder Source, they donated, uh, two units of cedar fence boards. And I think you guys all have the funding in your pocket, would you like me to state the, the, uh, support amount?
Sure, that way whoever's watching on, uh, YouTube or wherever, they can hear it too.
First Builder Source donated one thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents in cedar boards. Excuse me, Oregon Vangard Supply has graciously donated everything that we need for a timed drip system at two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Par Lumber in Newburgh donated fifty-eight-foot weather-resistant lumber, uh, boards and two boxes of DEX screws equalling five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and forty cents. Mitch Coleman donated the ground cover equalling two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Dayton High School FFA has donated two-hundred dollars in vegetables and flower starts. Will Coe in McMinnville has donated a hundred-dollar gift card. Pitt Johnson has donated two-hundred dollars. And Recology Organics has graciously donated twenty-five yards of soil equalling seven-hundred-and-twenty dollars, bringing our grand total to four thousand fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
That's fantastic.
So, as of right now, we don't really need a little cushion, we just need a little more push to get this garden up and off the ground, which is in the works. Today, we had our second delivery of Recology Organics. Uh, they are gonna make two more deliveries tomorrow. This weekend, we will be tilling that soil in, we will getting, get the ground covered. We will be, uh, bringing the garden beds. That's a big point there, Cody Stalls Woodshop Class, his students are building the garden beds, and they're gonna bring them down and deliver them. Summer school kids are gonna be filling the garden beds with help, filling the garden base, and then you're gonna be planting fall crops, so that they will hopefully be able to seize that kind of fruition when school starts again. Um, we are also working together with those cedar boards that we got. We are gonna be making planters and pots to sell at like the FFA sale or at Friday nights possibly, but those are going, those are going to support both of our clubs per se, the woodshop class and the garden, so that we're both kind of accruing a little bit of revenue back from the donations that we've been, that we've received, and they're gonna look pretty cute, too. Um, Easton Moody is donating all of his time to till and take care of the garden for us, and I think he's involved in the FFA. Um, let's see, what else do I have here? Um, I'm formulating a plan with the extension. Um, I'm formulating a plan with the extension department, one of my old roommates, actually, he works for them and. Put me in contact with a couple of really, really good people and they're gonna help us formulate a plan, what it looks like for the community. And uh, and the garden space for the grade school, that way it's, it's more uh, tight knit and where you're bringing the, the, the city. And the district together and then we can work more acrobably together. Um, we are formulating um, with Maria Alcarez, she's the community advocate for the Dayton grade school. We are forming uh, classes or times for the classes for the high school and junior high kids to come down and. Be immersed with the kids in there, get their hands dirty, show them how to plant plants. And so we're trying to get all of that scheduled and together. Um, so yeah, that, that is what I am presenting to you today, I just wanted to come in here and give you guys a. Solid update of what's happening and. I look forward to seeing what happens in the next six months.
If there are anything we can do to help you later and aside some money until we happen.
So when it comes to that, the big, the big thing is bridging the gap with the water. So what does that look like? We have one side of the garden, the garden is a seventy by seventy, roughly seventy by seventy like square. And we're gonna have one side for community that they are going to um, have like a plot space where the community can apply for a square footage of plot space. Then we're gonna have the grade school side, well, what's watering look like? How much water are we gonna actually use for the whole garden? We really wanted to take that guest factor of overwatering or underwatering. Out of the equation by doing the timer drip system and then nobody has to fuss with it or worry about it. But underneath all of that is that funding for the water to grow the garden. And that's where we may need some help with that.
But I just have a quick question, remind me, I know where the garden is, I walk by all the time, whose property is that?
That is the school's.
That's why I thought, so they probably have water.
They do, it is equipped already with water and electricity.
Yeah.
When it comes to adding, it's always been Dayton grade school, community garden is what it's always been.
Okay.
But when it comes to the, the community using the garden space. At the Dayton grade school, it becomes a little iffy. Uh, yeah, you gotta, you have to be, you know, vetted through the school, you can't be there during school hours, you can only come after hours. And that's where I'm asking the extension department to come in and kind of help us formulate a plan of what that looks like. So that it's a lot smoother than it has been in the past, and I feel like with that, we'll get a lot more community involvement.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Well, we'll definitely have you back soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Savannah.
Alright, now we have to move on to not as much stuff. Uh, page eleven. For the second reading of ordinance six six six, amending section seven point two point one one three, floodplain overlay district title seven, we'll use, we see. All that whole thing, the current nature.
No, just read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, ordinance number six six six, city dating and ordinance amending section seven point two point one one three. Floodplain overlay district FPO, uh, title seven, Dayton land use and development code of the Dayton municipal code.
Yes, sir. I move to approve a second reading of ordinance six 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 by title only. Second. I.
Bye.
And we need to adopt. Yes. I will go ahead, I move to adopt ordinance six six six. Based on the findings and recommendations set forth in the maintenance twenty twenty-five staff report. For LA two zero two five dash oh one. All those in favor?
Bye.
And I've got no names for some.
That's it.
That's nice, now here's another front line. We're going to appoint a budget committee members, Stephen Hessling, page one oh nine. Let's take the information. Steve looks around the corner for me, so.
I'm telling him and his bike.
Yeah, we have. Absolutely. Alright, I'd be happy to.
Hi.
Yes, motions. I move to appoint Steve Hessling to the city of Dayton budget committee for the term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. I'll second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
New budget committee member, yay. Okay, we're skipping on down to number six, page one thirty-five of your packet, supplemental resolution twenty-four slash. Twenty-five dash thirteen CCRLS, IGA amendment number two. Definitely there's that to approve, so if our name?
Yes, please.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty. Wait, slash or dash, okay. Twenty-four slash twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution approving amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement. Between Chmekada Community College and the city of Dayton for the Chmekada Cooperative Regional Library System. Also known in CCRLS. Second, how about you? I really saw the sign that was going so fast.
Where does it correct? Service.
Oh.
Is that okay?
With a correction service, I don't think it really. So much matters, library service.
Are we? No worries.
Okay, uh, I have a motion from Council Mackin, I have a motion from Council. Peter Peterson, thank you. Just gonna call you by your first name, I could have put the last name. Um, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, let us move on to another resolution. On page one forty-seven, a third bowl of resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five. Dash fourteen declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing its disposition. Any questions or comments or anything?
Is there anything to review on that or is it just?
It's just all the stuff that is.
It's the list of things, this is the library.
Yeah, I do both cell phone.
Page one fifty to one fifty-one.
Yeah.
Got it.
When they surplus. When they surplus it, does it? Go to goodwill or is there a process for that?
We'll find the most expedient way to dispose of these goods, that could include goodwill, it could include Craigslist if nobody wants it or it's stolen.
Can we donate the phones to the um, women's abuse facility? And or some of those places around town?
Absolutely, uh, send me the, the info for work and we'll.
Okay.
Make it happen.
Yeah, cause there's, uh, sometimes they give them out to the homeless who might need a phone in their time, so that routine.
Sounds like a good use force.
Perfect.
I also wonder about in that same situation, the, the mini computers, I would, you know. They kind of be, we need to know if they're worth anything for them. It might be a useful place to donate.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll double check on the computers. Okay, cool. Alright, I entertain a bunch.
I'm in there.
Yes, sir.
I mean to approve, sorry. I moved for approval of resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash fourteen. A resolution declaring certain property as surplus and authorizing its disposition.
I have a suggestion. I have a motion from Council Brad and a second from Council Mackin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Alright, we're gonna move on to page one fifty-three. Approval of resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash fifteen, adopting council rules updates. And anybody have any comments or?
Concerns. Just a comment, thank you for getting this all typed up and pulled together after our retreat and it was interesting to go back and read it again.
It was, yeah.
A lot of water running under the bridge, thankfully wrote this, thank you for that.
Yeah. Literally water under the bridge, yeah, alright, so entertain a motion.
Oh, okay. Uh, I need to approve resolution point four slash ten five dash fifteen. City council rules amendment number nine to resolution zero four slash zero five dash thirty-one, a resolution adopting at the same council rules.
Second.
Oh, good, Chris you got. Chris, okay. I have a version from Council Hill Grant and a second from Council Typro, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we are on page one seventy-three, a third goal of resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash sixteen. Um, adopting the city council goals. That was amazing.
That was an amazing day, it was, it was really fun for the guys.
It was. It was, I enjoyed that process quite a lot.
My needs friendly and, you know, read it.
Referred in.
Yeah. We need to have some place on the wall, in here. Yeah. Alright, cross pitch. Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move to approve resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash sixteen, adopting the city of Dayton twenty twenty-five. Slash twenty twenty-six, city council's strategic goal.
I was talking. Oh, excellent. And the motion for Council Hill Grant and a second from Council Mackin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, we're gonna move to page one eighty-one and uh, we'll talk about city manager performance evaluation discussion. Jenny, did you have any thoughts you wanted to back on?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, my employment contract states that the council may at his discretion. Hold affordable evaluation of my performance at the six month mark. I'm seeking direction from the council tonight on if you would like to proceed. The six month evaluation. Regardless, a twelve month evaluation is required, so if you don't do it at six month mark, it is required at twelve month mark. I would welcome an evaluation. At this milestone in my career so far with the city, it's hard to believe six months of work, someone's gone. Oh, wel- welcome that process, my recommended. Start to that process would be for the council to appoint one or two of its members to work with me to develop an evaluation instrument. Which we bring back to the full council for approval. And aim to wrap up process sometime in August.
Do I have any council members that would like to volunteer?
I'd be happy to volunteer.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Right, looks like we got two volunteers.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Uh, I move to approve the city manager's recommended six month evaluation process and timeline and to appoint. Council Peterson and Council Hill Grant to develop an evaluation instruments in collaboration with the city manager for city council.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion from Council Hill Grant and a second from Council Typro. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes, thank you.
True.
Alright.
You guys can follow up for sure.
Yes, sir.
So Jeremy, will you be reaching out to us to start that conversation?
Absolutely, I look forward to it.
Okay, uh, we're on the council comments and concerns, let's start with Council Mackin.
Okay, um, first off, last time I checked, the webpage still has the fireworks committee listed. And an opening on it, it needs to be updated in. Um, also, this billing and usage summary for water. There is a different form that we used to get, that is strictly. Units. Units produced, units billed, this has a lot of money involved with it. Um, the production just in units and how much we build has been an accurate, useful tool. I'd like to ask if we could change over from this dollar amount to just the units. Um, I have, we'll keep an eye on it better. Um. It, it did help us in trends when we were watching it, it actually did, and we had. We had a counselor who would pursue, peruse that, and it would watch it like a hawk. Um, so maybe we need to go back to doing that. But the other form that we used to have. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I bet you it was number, yeah. I think that we'll be able to find, hopefully it's. Still there.
I hope so, it was pretty.
What year that was?
Um, we, I'm sure we had it last year. Um, it's landscape rather than portrait, it has one line.
Nine.
Month. And a table that is, you know, year by year. It shows production by unit in each of our wells and other sources. It also shows how much we build to Lafayette and other things, and it showed us how much we build versus how much we produce.
I know what you're talking about, we, we have that.
Yeah, um, the dollar amounts aren't doing me any good. I'll just say that.
Um, we wanna know usage, man, usage. I just.
I guess it's a really good idea.
So, thank you, okay. What do you think, Don? That seemed.
I think she's talking about the water report that I do every month.
Okay. It sounds helpful.
Now that you're thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I think if, if we were to take some of that data. And put it in graphical format, that would be more useful than just looking at a one month snapshot. So.
I love graphics, I do too.
You're the day.
That would be helpful.
So you're the day comparison league rap, well, that would be good, see how our production is either increasing, which would be great. Or, you know, more than likely decreasing as the summer comes around, uh, and how usage correlates with that especially, sorry, Nathan.
Compared to last year.
Yeah, especially compared to last year, but also, um, uh. If we ask about water restrictions, how, how water restrictions affect usage, and if it does show any kind of realistic. Uh, decline, I think it's, I could, I'd fairly agree.
It used to.
I think we have it.
Alright, that's great, perfect, thank you. Alright, so remember.
Uh, I've got a few things, um, first things first, um, Council Typro, we'll get around to you, uh, I've heard some wonderful things about. Um, the run walk this last weekend, I would love to hear your thoughts on it as well, I'm sure that part of it, I'm just saying, I really love the portrait. Um, and then, but when I passed by, I had to go work that day for a club event, but uh, when I passed by, I mean, everybody was out and having a good time, lining up, checking in. It looked like it was a really, really good time, and great weather for it, so. Uh, you know, everything I've heard about is phenomenal. Uh, so one question with regard to code enforcement, so this, this night count that we've got here from four one to five one, um, and then. And then from four three to five three being eleven, is that? Is that? Is that enforced or is that reported? So. I'm curious just what the number is of reported but not enforced versus enforced totals. Uh, just to see what our ratio is of, you know, information from the community versus action. Um, so do we know if that's, uh, actioned or reported?
Counselor, I will need to look into this and get back to you in the next one, Councilor. I believe, uh. You make a good point, a distinction on that would be helpful.
Yeah, and, you know, that way we can just kind of see, you know, see how far some of this stuff goes. If some reports need more information and, and then we can kind of. Inform the community, hey, thank you for the reports. On average, we're seeing, you know, some things now goes through because of X, Y, or Z reasons. It just gives us a bit more data that maybe we can communicate out to make more effective reporting and more effective actioning. Um, and then, that's my question. Oh, um, my other question was actually with regard to water. This might be coming up here later. But, you know, we're going into June and, you know, what our timeline is for water restrictions, we're probably not going to have a solution by the time. You know, peak summer rolls around, uh, in, in any specific way. So, you know, sooner than we can push out, I know, um. Budget, we remember whole recognition that's, um, you know, certainly we can push out that information better for guardian purposes, you know, for. All the different things that take place in the summertime. So, uh, we're kind of against the wire in that, in a way, um, you know, since we're coming in June. Um, and then, I think at this point, that's all kind of the one.
Alright.
So, well, mine is. Maybe random, but we got information that, um, kind of not supposed to feed the staff on, on cities dying. And I guess I would like to charge you with maybe looking, is there, is there a fund or a way we can do that? Or can council feed? I like feeding the staff when we're asking the staff to stay here after work. Um, I just think, I think that's important. I mean, I think we can put our own bill and, you know, grab the chips and the cheese, uh, but I. I don't know. I, I don't know if there is a fund or if four times a year. I mean, I just. I think it's a nice gesture to give this amazing stuff that we have. And I, and I know, I mean, maybe I'm just a party animal, but I just think that. I just think that's a nice gesture.
We bought food.
And the state's saying, no, you can't feed them out of city money. And it's like, well. Hey, that's lame, because they're, we're asking them to stay here for a million hours in their day. Anyway. So, uh, is there any way or do we need to formulate, um, a little for us to do that?
My preliminary thoughts are that if, if you or other members of the community just voluntarily want to buy. Food, drinks, or something of that nature. That would be fine. And the city could too. We just need to have a policy making it a part of. The compensation package. That's what the state wants to see, the policy stating that food beverages and a wide, in meetings. And, and similar activities are part of the compensation package would be offered. As long as we have a policy in place, we can, we can provide it. But that brings a follow-up question on. And I don't know the answer to this. Are we going to have to track every sandwich we give an employee for, for tax and forty percent?
Right.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
Why on earth would you have to do that? That's, that's. Never mind.
Okay, cheese plate from France, we're in.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to just get our length, I guess. And I don't know if it's. I, I don't, because I'm a new kid, I don't know how often you do that and how often you need it. If it's every time, I guess I, we need to be informed before we set up a. Blue chain.
Boss for being.
And I want it to be a black cell, like. Charity, I want it to be celebrating this staff is what I want it to sound like. We want to celebrate this place. And, and the people that are running it. And I'd like to figure out a way to do that. So I guess we just need, uh, need a little more detail before, I mean, before we set up some kind of system.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you. That's all. Did you say you had it there?
I did. You, you said you were, you're good, huh?
Okay.
Okay. Um, so actually, what, what Councilor Peterson touched on reminded me of, um, the thing I've forgotten. So I, I wanted to, um, kind of circle back on last meeting and commend every member of the staff that was here. I think. So, sitting in, in your chairs, those can be some of the most uncomfortable conversations to be a part of. You know, when we're reviewing budget, when we're reviewing, you know, compensation, all of that. They can be super uncomfortable. And you all handled it with professionalism and poise. And I, I think it's important to mention that, you know, um, those are, are. Difficult all the way around. And, you know, throughout all of it, you all did phenomenally. So I just thank you. A, and thank you B for everything that you did in there. So. Just wanted to, just wanted to mention it, that's all.
Thank you. I. I echo those same notes. How, hey, Councilor Typro, you got comments, concerns?
Um, the only comments I have tonight is the Dayton Y Run event that was held over the weekend, as Drew mentioned. Uh, the ladies, Savannah and Cheryl, the other ones that kind of took that animal on. And I agree, it was a fantastic event. Uh, there was over two hundred participants that were signed up. Um, and a lot of family members that came out there to watch and root on. All the volunteers that they were able to accrue and have at each corner, um, at where they turned on the race course. Uh, it was fantastic. And Annette, thank you for coming out and, uh, starting the race off. That was fantastic. Uh, congratulations to Jeremy for winning his time slot for the age bracket that he was in. Congrats, buddy. Um, all in all, it was great. The weather turned out fantastic. And a lot of praise from the community on having that. They were very excited. That that was a thing. So looking forward to next year now.
Absolutely. I'll actually walk. Maybe a rabbit or that.
Is the plan for it to be the same again next year, the weekend following, more than a year? Is that kind of the idea?
I think that's the idea. I'm gonna have a follow-up meeting with them here probably in a week, um, get a little bit more details. On what their thoughts are. Plus, kind of tweak it a little bit. I think we might think about, um, different age brackets starting at different times possibly. Uh, some comments that I heard, uh, as we were walking. So just, I wanted to bring that to them, so. Yeah, I think it's going to be the same though, same time.
I think for not to plan on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, we're gonna move on to, oh, wait, wait. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Chris, uh, follow the question real fast. So the last, uh, the Venice Committee meeting, was that, have you had one since we had the budget meeting? No, you, yeah. You wouldn't have.
Yeah, we just had one last Wednesday.
Well, how, how did that go? Was the budget discussed in any way, shape, or form? I'm just curious how the meeting went, from your view.
Um, well, um, it was emphasized. Multiple times that we now have to make extra efforts to go out and. Get sponsorships, get donations. Uh, we spread it out to each member. Um, we actually were a little closer to the, the goal amount than we had thought for the fireworks show. So, um. I think while we were in the meeting, we were able to reach out and get three more donations from some community members. Um, we've got probably five more that we've already contacted. Um, the general consensus was a little bummed, but they understood. So, and we did realize that, look, you know, we gotta step it up. Uh, this is something that the community enjoys. We enjoy it. Um, and that we gotta make this happen and push through this coming year. So, everybody was on board.
Thank you, Chris, for the follow-up. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna quickly move on, but before I move on. Fourth of July, be there as great as anything, or I'm coming down. So be there, bring your families. It's fantastic. Last year was amazing. The weather was fantastic. There were tons of people. From all over the place that came, not just, they totally. Was really good. So, please come, spread the word. And August fifth, again, I will hunt you down. You better be there. For this national night out. It's a really good time to connect with your community members, um, to hear what's on their minds. And by then, a lot of things are kind of going to be rolled out by then, and they're going to have a lot on their minds. So. Be there. It's good face time. Um, and then the last thing, uh, is mid-September, I'll have to look at work again because I don't remember the exact dates, but mid-September, I will be going. Um, to Minneapolis, Minnesota for a work conference and I will be gone. So hopefully it'll be. You know, not a big deal, otherwise you'll just take over at B A M. So. I don't think I want to do it from the hotel room again, sorry. Um, but anyways, okay. Now we'll just move on to, uh, information reports. We're gonna start with Debbie.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you'll notice that we have a sign sitting over here in the room. So when we, we commissioned the sign on the highway to be done. We were able to, for a small fee, have them create three additional signs. So the thought being that it doesn't happen today or have to happen today, but. They do lend themselves incising to the entrances. On Highway two-twenty-one, south and north, as well as two-thirty-three coming in. From Lafayette Highway. So. If you have interest in that, uh, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but if you have interest in that, um, we can do it. And it will bring a branding together, uh, with what we're doing on Highway eighteen, so.
I like it.
Yeah, I want you to be aware of that. Um.
These are really, would that be replacing the old signs there?
Yeah, the existing, yeah, wooden ones.
Okay.
Um, we are in presentation mode starting tomorrow night. Uh, we have a, uh. Discover Dayton Presentations can be made to the D C D A. And I think they're going to be pleasantly surprised by some of the things that we've been able to do to help them out, not just now, but in going forward. So, um, with regards to, we may not have the funds, but we have the support. And I think it's going to be well received by them, um. Uh, when we get together tomorrow night. We're also going to do a presentation to the Dayton Business and Winery. Uh, community, again, on Discover Dayton on June the twelfth. We're gonna hold that over at the Ina Dayton, uh, courtyard. And that will be about talking to our fourteen wineries around here that, yes, you may be in the Dundee A D A. But you are Dayton addressed. And we would like you to know what's going to be happening in Dayton going forward. And get on the Dayton bandwagon, because, uh, I think you're gonna find that you're gonna want more and more of an affiliation with Dayton. Uh, so we're gonna do that. And then we will be making our presentation to council on Discover Dayton. Uh, our annual one on August fourth, so we last spoke to you in August of last year. And by then, we'll hopefully be able to update you with even more things going forward. We're waiting on the travel Oregon competitive grant decision that will be made, I believe, on the seventeenth of June. And that we put in for the ADA grant for the bandstand, so we'll, fingers crossed. Um, and then, other than that, we had some things on the budget, um. Requests, okay, that obviously fell by the wayside due to funding. Uh, I'll work with Jeremy, discussing with him, because we're, we're cognizant about. Overwhelming ourselves with grant requests and going after everything. But some of the things we had on the list were like shade for the playground, um, Andrew Smith Park, a picnic shelter, uh. And then Palmer Creek, we were looking at interior paint, which doesn't really matter right now because we're not going to be using it the way we intended. But at least we can look at some of those. The only problem is a lot of those grants don't come up till the first year or so. But we can start, I mean, we can look and start writing them in the fall, um, for next year, because, um, yeah, it's amazing to me. I looked at. A lot of different options and I was like, oh, man, they don't start till January. So, anyway, we'll be working on that as well. We're discussing with, uh, Jeremy. At this point, that's what I have for our, our meeting.
I have just a question. How many wineries have a Dayton at this?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, fourteen of them. And they're significant, too.
Yeah, they are, oh, yeah.
Do you know why, I'm so sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Do you know why I stayed at for Ina Dayton?
For what?
At the end, at Dayton.
At the end of Dayton? So they opened their doors a week ago Friday.
Oh, nice.
But it was a soft opening, like a couple of rooms kind of thing is what they were working up to. But they're going to be inviting the community later this month. To come and do the tour that you were exposed to as well. So the whole community will brought, be brought in to take a look at, so. That's when I call it the real launch, you know?
Can you help them to pick different hors d'oeuvres for this community?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Those were pretty high-end.
Yeah.
Do you know if they've been able to lease out any of the?
They have, I think two of the four have serious interest right now, lots more than they have before. So they were working with, uh. Somebody for the cafe end of things, Coffee Cafe on the corner.
Yeah.
And they were working with somebody on the restaurant. Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, right?
Yeah, so it's good. It's good.
Good. Right on. Alright, and move on to Dawn.
One's short and sweet. Uh, leak detection, we started today. So we are all over the community. We're checking every meter in town. Uh, fire hydrant and every valve. Uh, should be wrapped up. They're hoping Thursday afternoon, but it's scheduled tentatively through Friday, so. Just be aware if you see them out, we're just finishing up. Uh, our annual backflow testing was completed. So they go around and test all of. All the backflows that are in the area that are registered and all the city ones, so. Um, should be getting a report. Here shortly on. How we have called out that all went, uh. Citywide cleanup. It was a lot less busier than past years, but it was still a success. Um.
My husband thinks she.
It was, it was a good event. It was just slower than all.
It was a weird weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was weird.
Did you have anybody from out of town trying to sneak in, like, in prior years, or was it pretty?
No, any out of town people paid their, let's see.
That's great, that's good.
We only had a couple.
Three of them?
Three. Um. The T M D L staff, which is basically just a handful of us staff members that are on, uh, work together on T M D L training. Um, we went over to the grade school. Dave gave his presentation and his fish soup and kids had a blast, so.
That thing is.
Yeah, it's a highlight every year. Uh, Public Works is gearing up for working Friday nights, so we had a meeting with D C B A, kind of got everything lined out, expectations and everything, so everybody's happy.
Who's your man?
It's gonna go back to the way it used to be. It's gonna be whoever's on call and just rotating every week, so.
So it won't be Justin all the time.
Yeah. Now that he's a full-time staff member, we can't contract him out, so. As much as he would love to.
Oh, I'm sure, and I, I'm sure a couple of the other people would love it.
Yeah. Um, we got the flower baskets up in the park, been irrigating them, so that's all going well. I had a opportunity to sit in for, uh, the regional water meeting. Jeremy was tied in with the budget, so I got to go over and. Be a part of the conversations. They're working on putting together, uh, requests for proposal to get some engineer. Firm on board to help out with planning and getting stuff kind of rolling that way, so. There should be, should be some, some interesting stuff coming out of that here in the near future. Just.
Make it affordable for us small communities.
Yeah, uh, basically, it's just gathering information, but it's, it's exciting that there's. Multiple small communities that are sitting at the table, having the conversations and. And everybody, for the most part, the, I mean, I can't speak for all of them, but the meeting I was at, everybody worked together and it was. It was kind of a, a team moving together, so it was kind of a nice sight to see, so. Um, and then lastly, Dave and myself went and met with the majority of people involved with, uh. Planning for Fourth of July display, so the city kind of has our marching orders. Um, that meeting was today. Top of Fire Chief kind of got everything. It, it got changed a little bit from last year after we had set everything up, so we've got a little bit clearer. What their vision is, so, and how we can help them accommodate that. So it was a good meeting and. Sounds like it's gonna be. Yeah.
Figure that out.
A little, yeah.
Yeah, bigger level, a little, yeah, sounded good, so.
I'm excited. Just let it be like eighty-five, though, God.
Yeah.
We don't need ninety-two of them.
That was hot, man, hot. I was so happy when the sun went down.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Alright, and we're gonna move on to city managers report and hopefully everybody heard that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to commend the city team, everybody in this room, plus Cindy, Ricky, our entire public works crew, who am I miss? Yanna for cleanup day and uh. We had numerous members from the LDS Church here who participated in that. We're thankful for their attention and. Dispensing of this and of course recology for for pitching in, so I'd like to thank everybody for making that a success. Tomorrow I will be meeting with. Regional Solutions and Business Oregon to talk about potential funding for Fisher Farms, so one funding source would be a a grant. Pay for the water quality testing for those wells. They get them permitted through OHA and then the construction part would likely be a little bit financed. I'll learn more about that tomorrow. If it looks fruitful, I'll be bringing that to you for further. Discussion from erection. The financial statement audit is done. We had it uploaded last week to the Secretary of State's Audit Division by the May thirty-first deadline and it kept extending and extending and extending. Finally got it out the door.
Her CEO's like, thank God.
Yes, hallelujah. We had an unmodified opinion, meaning no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were identified. I will be putting this in your updated interim meeting so that it happens. Our work with the CPA firm that I brought on board to help us get caught up is concluded for this fiscal year. And the approved budget, I do have funding for them to continue working with us on a more limited basis in the next fiscal year. They also prepared a document with observations and recommendations for improvement, which we will use to. Continue to improve our accounting practices. I'm working with our legal counsel on drafting ordinances to authorize the public safety and stormwater fees the budget committee approved. Our attorney forwarded me an ordinance for the public safety fee today, which I review. She has follow-up questions for me on the stormwater fee. It's possible that the methodology will be different. Than what was described in the budget message, just due to the different ways that you can do this. I'll be bringing that to you for first draft, get your input, recommend things, then schedule a public hearings and. The legislature held a hearing on the capital funding bill earlier in May. I was not able to testify because Dayton had already testified and there was a large number of people who wanted to get before the committee. So instead I uploaded written testimony and I kept our legislature in the loop. Business Oregon has completely dispersed all of the loan. Through them for the pump station project. That's over one million dollars. I held numerous meetings with Lafayette, McMinnville Water and Light, the city team on the Ashford Transmission Line. I started to write a sentence here, but got sidetracked. Just want to let you know that paperwork is is um still continuing on that. I've asked staff to prepare billings for land use applicants through the start of this fiscal year. CEO spent a lot of time going through bills and calculating how much. The engineer and planner charges, she put it all on a spreadsheet, sending it out to land use applicants. She sent out billings of twelve, thirteen thousand, twelve thousand, we've got about half of that. If folks don't pay up, we'll we'll follow up on that. And Jason is working on. Staying on top of our type A and type B permits, so type B permits for the more extensive. Like parking lots, road construction, and staying on top of calculating those costs so that we can repeat them. We spent a lot of money in planning services this year and. Well, we didn't get reimbursed. I've directed staff not to take reservations at the community center until further notice. We are honoring reservations that have been made through this year. I've met with DCBA and DFW representatives and informed them what's going on. And that their use of facility is guaranteed at least through the end of the year. In May, I focused on the budget process. This week, I aim to complete the supplemental budget, light iron transfer, clean up the budget by fiscal year end. You'll see that at a future meeting. I'm also finalizing year-end projections, but we stay within appropriations. What questions do you have for me?
So, um, so the meeting that you're having, was it twenty-four?
Yes.
Um, so can we be able to have a follow-up on that at the work session and then month work session?
Yes.
Perfect, love that.
Any more questions? Alright then. Uh, we're going to adjourn, have a five-minute body break, and then we'll start our. Jason, that happened, that's the one, fortunately. Alright, so we'll adjourn at seven fifty. Turn the air, get it down.
Good to see you. Guys, take care.
Alright, thanks for coming.
I kidding. What are we gonna do with the old Dayton signs if we replace them?
I don't know, have to come up with an idea.
Have to come up with a maybe. Put it on the fence.
Yeah, right? Get on the side.
Everybody, everybody coming out of Center Market.
Exactly.
Same.
Exactly.
All owned and private property. What is it, the, um, what's it called when you, if if like you have a. Piece of property that's like on your property, it's just like a tiny sliver and take care of it for fifteen years, then it comes to yours, what's that called? Um. Regardless, my drink's kind of sour at this point, but it's gonna be like that, but for the sun.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, there you go. Just take care of the sun here.
Yeah, since today, man, I would have been almost on the fuck. Years in.
Hey, Dawn, is that, uh, one bathroom did we close, still closed?
Yeah.
Is that just to fill for the notice?
Pretty much.
What happened?
Yeah.
Going over by you.
Well.
Till we get money to make some repairs and, uh.
That's the new one that we put in too, right?
Yeah.
Of course.
That is.
Right down the street, but it's not in main town, so not everybody sees what's happening. You could go to that bathroom, the unfortunate thing.
It's amazing the destruction in such a short period of time.
Oh, I think I know who does it, but.
It'd be shocking because some of the vandals are not even up to date. That we've caught on camera, so.
Well, that's because they get zero.
Right.
Maybe a horrible idea, just to save curiosity, I don't know how these things work. Though it was assembled when it was dropped in. Once it's dropped in, it can't be repositioned anywhere else, right? I'm assuming once it's replaced, it's replaced.
Oh, I'm sure they could like move that bathroom to another location.
I mean, just save curiosity if it's a place long-term, it's like, hey, this is just an environment, you know?
Sure you could, but.
Yeah.
We got your cap plumbing and.
Yeah.
We'll find a way.
Chip out a foundation.
We're gonna find a way. Somebody, I'm gonna retire, my ass will just sit right down there.
You know what? I don't doubt.
We better not mess that bathroom up.
Sit on the corner with your coffee.
That's exactly right. I won't be mayor then, so won't make it hurt. We got it all planned out, we even have, you know.
Instead of stay off my wall, I said my daddy.
Camel, where's your camel? Okay, we got it. Let us get busy with this other meeting. Dayton Urban Renewal Agency, we will, we're not gonna do the pledge again, we already did it once, so we're gonna bypass that, okay? Um, we're gonna call that meeting at seven fifty-five on the lake side. Uh, we've pretty much got a full house minus Counselor Lava Hubber and McGuire. So, did McGuire's excuse? Should, will be the feature in, yeah, he called, he texted me, yeah, so, yeah. No. No, I I didn't hear from him at all, but anyways, um, so, yeah, there we are. Did anybody sign up for? In this meeting? Alright. Alrighty, on to action D, three of the minutes for minute six, twenty twenty-four meeting. Right? Do we remember what happened back then? I actually remember it, but. It wasn't that long. Fine, we're taking motion.
Madam Mayor.
Please.
Or should the chair? Uh, anyway, um, I moved to approve the May sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Top second. I'm on it. Motion for Council, Council, well, alright. That's right.
You don't forget it too.
Yeah, second from Council back in, uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yay, have an approval of minutes. Alright. Public hearing, the Urban Renewal Agency will hold a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the budget for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five. As approved by the URA Budget Committee. And everybody's signing that up and we're gonna open that up at seven fifty-seven and we'll keep it open for a minute. I close it back down. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and close the public meeting. And I'll entertain motion to adjourn. So moved. So moved, we are adjourned. Just make sure it's a whole minute. We are done. Thank you.